Budgeted to the state of the United States, America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Before we approve the agenda, there is a last minute addition. We're gonna add a 28E Delaware County Jail.
Inmate housing agreement?
Inmate housing agreement.
I make the motion to adjut?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So, no, with that, with that addition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the minutes of January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, regular meeting in January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five budget work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve Buchanan County burn ban effective January thirty first, twenty twenty five at eight a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Approve the salary recommendations from the compensation board.
So.
I think, I'm not sure that we need to have a raise on our side. I mean, they've made the recommendation, it's our, it's our decision whether or not we want to improve it.
Well, Keith, that's my only source of income.
I would second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's alright. Approve fund transfer from general basic to general supplemental.
That's just a budgeted item that we do every year. We've done that. This is the second half of it. We did the first half this fall after taxes came in.
This is the annual cash flow conversation. We just pivot over.
Yeah, every year it's budgeted to move it from general basic to general supplement, and I do it in two moves, so it's not so hard on the fund balance.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, approve final deputy appointments for the sheriff's office.
Those were just a few stragglers that the sheriff had that he'd finished up.
Do you need to read over all those, or just?
They're in there. I think there was three of them. I think it was Deputy Guncov, K nine, Abby?
Yes.
Ryan Buddha, Hugo?
Hugo.
Hugo, Ryan Guncov, and I have Tyler Klensman, and Abigail Hendrich.
Yep, those will be the final ones.
Need a motion to approve, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the appointments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
I think we skipped over, nevermind, I skipped over.
Approve the appointment of Charles Belts to certified local government commission. This is a reappointment.
So moved.
Right, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Approve the appointment of Julie Clammer, Buchanan County Compensation Commission, as an owner of city property, and she's replacing the current member.
Who she replaces?
Um, the man that passed away.
Oh, that's right, okay, second.
I'm very pleased.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Approve Wyatt Miller, Buchanan County Compensation Commission, as an owner operator of agricultural property.
So moved. He'll be a welcome addition to that board.
Yeah.
Yeah, I note that as application. I'll, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Approve the appointment of John Francis and Board of Augustment, five-year term, and that's a reappointment.
Reappointment, yes.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, through ARPA projects.
Second, the concrete slab repaired for five hundred and fifty dollars, sub pump for one thousand five hundred, replacement of outboard water spigots for two thousand seven hundred and fifty, and for asbestos inspection.
So basically what that was, it's a total of five thousand one hundred and twenty dollars that originally came out of capital projects. However, it was nothing that we had to, or no, I'm sorry, it came out of building maintenance and courthouse. And it was just an idea that I came up with. That means these were special projects for the courthouse, and to save on the maintenance fund, I was suggesting to take them out of ARPA.
We have to use that up anyway, so.
Correct. And so they're already paid for. If it is approved, then we'll just do a journal entry, moving those funds from the maintenance into the ARPA funding.
What do we have left in ARPA?
I don't know off the top of my head. I think there's a little over two hundred thousand dollars that needs to be used up. That's not actually spoken for. I mean, generalized, you guys approved that agenda, or agenda, I'm sorry, resolution for items, but it is not all spent.
It's earmarked, it has not.
Yep.
I would make the motion to approve those ARPA projects.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We don't need a roll call and.
Let's do one just to be on the safe side.
Roll call.
We'll go on, aye?
We'll go on.
For a say.
Thank you.
Okay, next, approve the minor plot for Doug, Doug Janelle and Neil Raff that talked about this.
Yeah, yeah. So this was rezoned June of twenty twenty four. This was originally proposed as two lots. The potential buyer for this is just looking to purchase one lot and retain it for himself. So the acres is going to be four acres. Not much to this one. As far as any driveway, when I had reached out for permitting and approval, that seemed like it was going to be okay, from Brian Kyliever. Have any questions? Obviously, he's sitting behind me.
Second, this is okay for a driveway?
Yeah, and spacings is one of the things too, but that, um, yeah, that stretch road, I'm not remembering where it is right now, but that was the kind of things we looked for.
Yes, it's just north of.
Kowski diagonal.
Taylor's house.
That's on the Kowski diagonal?
Yeah, this would be right across from where Ralph Kramer, yes, thank you. Yep, yep. So this is just kind of step one for their minor plot approval. And all supporting documents were obtained.
There's a question.
Take a motion if we.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Do you want to discuss the inmate housing agreement now before you?
Yes.
Okay.
The inmate housing agreement, I think I handed it, did I hand it down to you?
Go on.
And I think I emailed it to all of you on Friday.
Right.
I know, I had a question though, when I was reading over that. So it's only going one direction?
For, for this agreement, um, to, as far as back and forth?
Right.
Yes, for, for this agreement would be for us going to Delaware County.
Okay.
This due to the painting project and refurbishing of the jail?
Yes. We scheduled our painting project with our numbers getting down, and obviously that doesn't happen the next day. With, getting closer to the, which started this morning actually, was, numbers went back up, and with the male and female numbers, um, we have to empty a pod.
Right.
Um, they can't be in there for at least probably three days, probably minimum by the time they get it painted, and let it dry for twelve to twenty-four hours before we can replace them back in. With the numbers we had, we were gonna be able to keep the females moved around and not violate, violating real issues or anything like that. Our numbers went up, and they even went up more this weekend. I think we gained another five this weekend. That's probably aren't gonna be, at least another female on top of it. So we got five females that I made contact last week with, they are in Delaware County. Their numbers are down, and they were willing to help us out during the, during this time. It'd probably be between, close to two weeks that we've been housing all the females in Delaware County. And we did agree to, obviously, the medications that they're on, doctor visits or anything like that. It'd be our responsibility for the transports back and forth and to keep their doctor's appointments. I've talked with our jail nurse, he has no problem with managing them from over there also during this time.
And we would be responsible for transporting them to, to Atlanta?
Yes.
That seems like a good agreement to have in place for one term anyway, just to make sure we have.
For, for right now, it's, it's short term. We didn't have anything with Delaware County. We did have some with Black Rock County, but their numbers are pretty high right now, and their terms and conditions were a little different than what we could make with Delaware County. So they were in the timeframe that I kind of pushed this on them.
Should I be where it's really equal?
Do you, do you want to consider making it longer? I mean, it seems like a good thing to have in place.
Yeah, that's definitely something that I think Travis, the sheriff over there, would definitely be willing to do.
Yep.
My biggest thing was, we was kind of short notice getting something drawn up and in place for now, and, and getting it approved, I guess.
No more questions for the sheriff, take it.
I have a question.
Okay.
Once it's all signed by everyone, who's filing it with the Secretary of State? Do you want me to do that?
Who? I'll start with Travis, but I think us, since we're asking for the agreement.
Yeah, and then I can send him a copy of the filing. I just want to make sure someone files it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright.
So I'll let him know that. He's new too, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I'll set, once it all gets signed, and if I get a copy scanned back to me with the signatures, that's all I need.
Okay, and we did send it out where we could DocuSign it for their board and for ours, and I've, I've already signed it this morning. Wait for the approval from the board.
Make the motion to approve the 18D agreement between Delaware County and County for inmate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, items for discussion placed on file, the filing manure management plans, Indy Byron Township, section nineteen, E and L OGS LLC Fremont Township, section sixteen, Wolf Cool Site, Newton Township, section twenty-four.
Um, I make the motion to second those on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Oh, two minutes. So I did leave all of you guys a bid sheet.
It's in the packet though.
There should be three of them in there.
Hey, how's it going?
Fred.
Is it getting work?
Keep it put together. The Viva mission.
You could have worked, favors.
Yes. I have nine fifteen.
Okay.
We have received two bids. The first one from Bruning Rock Products. Okay, for Division One, and I'm sorry, Brian, I always get this mixed up, is it Division One, the northern or the southern?
I think it's the northern's.
Northern?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Division One, tonnage fifty-two thousand eight hundred, unit price fourteen point eight three nine nine, for the total amount of seven eight three five four six point seven two. For Division Two, the tonnage is the same, unit price is fifteen point two four nine, for the total of eight zero five one four seven point two oh. Total amount, one million five eight eight six nine three point nine two.
What's the Division One, again?
Uh, the full amount or the unit price?
Unit price.
Unit price was fourteen point eight three nine nine.
Seventy-eight three fifty-four.
Seven eight three five four six, Division One.
Okay.
And clarification, yes, Division One is in the work.
Okay, thank you. And the second one is from BMC Aggregates. And Division One, the northern division, the tonnage is fifty-two thousand eight hundred, unit price fifteen ten, total amount seven nine seven two eight zero. Ready for the next one? Okay, Division Two, tonnage the same, unit price fifteen ten, total amount seven nine seven two eight zero.
And the prices remain the same if we split it up?
So basically, right now, the lowest bid for Division One, the northern division, is for Bruning Rock Products at fourteen point eight three nine nine.
Mm-hmm.
And then for Division Two, the lower bid is for BMC at fifteen point ten.
I make the motion that we award Bruning Rock Division One and award BMC Aggregates Division Two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, next we get to meet with County Engineer Brian Kyliever to approve the TSIP funding for W F thirty five, or W forty five.
Oh, well, my apologies, what was that again?
Uh, approved the traffic safety improvement plan for W forty five.
Yes, I forward that on. What it is, is we're picking up funds again for W forty five in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars, and that supplements our farm market account. That, that is where we end up with requiring the four-foot paint shoulder, safety edge, safety feature, center rumbles, shoulder rumbles, and wider pavement workings too.
There was what, resolution in your packet. I went back and looked when we had approved funding before, and kind of did an update, and then I did send it to Alex for his input, and he did update a few things for me on it. Regarding, it was just wording, so.
Is this from the federal government or state?
These are federal funds.
Federal, okay.
And so, um, one of the concerns, and this has been raised statewide in light of some of the actions lately, where they were trying to freeze some of these federal programs. These would be in those categories that, um, they're not formula, they're discretionary. And so, we watch those words fairly close.
Hope you approve this, it might hang out there anyway.
I'm an optimist. I, I, hey, you charge forward with the expectation of it happening, and this is the smaller amount, because I've got one point nine million STBG, which is formula. I, at least, it's formula to the states, so I'm assuming that's the way they're defining it. Even though we get, it's supposed to be discretionary, that's where we go to Antico and argue for funding.
Comes the voting process.
Comes the voting process. Even though we try to suballocate is probably the term to try and have some equity in the process. But yes, it's four hundred thousand, and it directly feeds into the farm market account.
Any questions? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Here it is. Okay, next, meet with a member of the Buchanan County Fair Association. Members or member? Yeah, I'm just gonna say, looks like member.
Your friends, Fred. Push hard, push hard or pull hard, don't let anybody hit you.
So.
Thank you.
Reality, this is a preliminary, and I get list. We would like to communicate with you guys sometime on what your expectations and what you would like us to do, in directions. Um, you notice on all these, I circled the judges. You guys have always funded the judges in the past. Um, we was wondering if it would be possible to divert that money to something different? And why I say that, we've got a private entity that said that they want their name unassigned as paying for the judges? We don't want you walking in thinking that you paid for them and have another name unassigned. Um, judge price has went up quite a bit, but you'd think there'd probably be another place in the Fair Grounds Fair Association where you could use the youth money and go towards something different, and kind of, they, they do it in the three fairs around us, and they just think it's a big deal. I know, money is always a big deal, but.
What would you suggest to divert the funds?
Well, um, I don't know. I mean, we've got several youth programs that we do, and I mean, normally you guys have looked at the funds as far as it looks to me as something that does a, goes across the fair and between the youth programs and that stuff. Um, I mean, there's several different buildings that all obviously need stuff done to them, and we've been staying on top of them pretty good, but you can't get on top of everything.
How much is that money?
Pardon?
How much is it, the judges?
It's, you've been paying four grand. It's, it's up there.
Fourteen thousand is what we've been.
Fourteen thousand is what you've been allocating towards this stuff, and four thousand of it's been about what our judges have cost in the past. Last year it was forty-two, and the balance goes to the ribbons and. Yeah, yeah.
And I don't remember off the top of my head, I'd have to look it up, but I know that is something in the code that allows you to give that funding for the, the ribbons, the premiums.
You know.
And from my understanding, it goes to you guys, and then you basically.
Distribute it to the areas.
Yes.
And, and we've always listed what it is for on purpose, so you guys know that, and it works through code.
That's easy on it, if we know exactly where it's going.
Right, right. And we didn't want to divert it without talking about it, and we want to have your input on it. I, I feel that, I mean, the code that you're talking about is also what we wanted to look up. We started to do it, and then we got. Yeah, but, I, I mean, there, there should be several different ways of going about it.
Just a comment, is, if we're still trying to gear up toward youth benefiting from it, the repairs of the cow barn makes a lot of sense, because they're all gonna house cattle there.
Right.
And the four-H building is where they bake their pies. You remember that pie option, that's a great thing.
Yeah, they got that remodel, though, didn't they, the four-H building?
Four-H building, um, we've spent a lot of money on it in the last year and a half. We put a roof on it and sited part of it, and inside of it, we re-tended and changed it. Um, probably more labor. I did most of that myself, so there's a lot into it. But it is, here's Kelly.
Yeah, we have members.
We're, we're a little early. So, anyway, yeah, the four-H building, we've done quite a bit of stuff to bring it up. Um, there's still a few things, putting the doors on the front of it, which is huge. When you walk into the building, you don't feel like you're walking into a dark tunnel anymore, which helps quite a bit. And so that was just necessary things that we had to do to get it up to date. The, like you mentioned, the beef barn, um, last year it was completely rewired. So now we have good wiring in the building, we better put a roof on it. Sometimes that's backwards, but we needed the wiring for fair because of the extra demands from everybody that have livestock in there, and what they need to help cool the livestock and maintain them.
That's the way you know would actually pay for that four thousand dollar we asked, and assign, signing. That way, if we had first responders that needed to get some lace, we'd find some of the.
Right. Yeah. Um, yeah, that's just on, on that particular thing, but I want to make sure whatever it is we do falls within the guidelines of what you're supposed to be doing.
Right.
And. Southern label, what did you, as far as, so last year you allocated, just for some exact numbers, because I know you guys always want them to connect them numbers, but on the Beef Electric, I think you guys allocated twelve thousand, and we spent twenty-four thousand dollars for that specific product. Yes, the actual numbers on that, and Fred's numbers on the four-H building. So we had three, three major capital improvements that we did up there in last fiscal year. The four-H building was thirty thousand total, that included the reciting metal and the front entry doors, like you had mentioned, and then the small animal barn needed some post replaced in it, just to, any structurally improve that and put a new roof on that. So that was twelve thousand, two hundred dollars that we spent on that building as well. So them were the three major capital improvements for last year that were done up there. And, and basically were necessary to be completed.
So basically, we would be staying with our ten thousand to the ribbons and premiums, and then we would go for additional four.
If I recall, already, when we, you first went over it, you did the fourteen thousand for the ribbons and the premiums, the judges, and then an additional eight thousand for whatever the association felt they needed for repairs or remodels. That was what you, that you guys initially did, remember, when we had the budget workshop?
And the fourteen just updated, it's been that way ever since, in a long time.
I think, we did the fourteen and then above and beyond last year, didn't we?
Correct. But the fourteen's always, you guys have always allocated that fourteen for them three specific purposes. It's, it's been in excess of ten years for sure for that, so.
My initial thought is to move the other four thousand into the beef barn and.
So.
Finish up some of their projects over there.
So that would, just so I make sure I have it right, so that would reduce the ribbons and. So that would, just so I make sure I have it right, so that would reduce the ribbons and premiums to ten thousand.
Right.
The original eight thousand or the building repairs add four thousand to that for a total of twelve thousand in funding to the association.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have that in a motion?
What, Chris said, only the motion?
Okay, that's wrong.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, this next will be public comments. From you guys. Yeah, Bonnie?
Question referring back to last week, was that about it all, that whole, that paper that you guys got, and I'm assuming this is up for discussion because it was brought up by Keith. Well, probably too junk, that paper that John got in the mail. Um, all I got out of that was like something to do with terrorism and that can, can we get an explanation on that because I'm just blank area.
So, I, I can jump in here, yeah, uh, we received a letter, um, the individual, it was kind of difficult to understand and so there was some conversation about treason of. The US government or something to that effect, we referred it on to the county attorney and the county sheriff as well, so.
So he was accusing someone of terrorism?
It was very difficult to understand.
Yeah, there was no context to it, just a lot of code.
Yeah.
Like it wasn't a letter saying, well, this is how it feels and so it will happen, it was just a, it was just a lot of.
A bunch, a bunch of common law, a bunch of court cases and things like that, and so.
The information came from a sovereign citizen, and so if you know.
Yes.
They're behind, um, he is one that makes numerous requests and has for numerous years.
Got it, okay.
So.
Which is good, I mean, that side of it's good, it's, the letter was a little, something we referred on to them.
Request, I don't know.
Oh.
Yes, because they're above the, I mean, these folks do not believe in the law.
Always.
They are a sovereign citizen, they're, the law doesn't apply to them. So the reason it's so difficult to understand is because they have their own standard of laws.
Okay.
So that's where it's, oh.
Little challenging to kind of figure out how to answer their questions, I suppose.
Correct.
Okay.
And was it a week ago Friday when I had a gentleman and. They're friends.
Okay.
Same deal.
Yeah.
So.
The government basically.
No, yeah, no.
Yeah.
Correct.
To the fact that they like to drive without driver's licenses.
Want to be heard.
It always makes it interesting, we'll just put it that way.
Have we heard anything from this legislative session, you know, last year, it happened both in the House and the Senate where they tried to take away local control from the counties? Any, any, you guys any feedback from anything going on at state right now?
Which conversation, which control?
Yeah, then I mean, there's still moving forward with the HHS realignment, um, there wasn't a lot of answers there as to how the bills are gonna get paid at the end of the day. Once, because there's no, because there's no border commission left at, on June thirtieth, well, there's still. Bills that are gonna be coming in, so there's nobody to approve those expenditures, so I suppose those will all go to the state. Um, nothing is moving forward with public health, so they're gonna be that the way it is. Or not. And they don't know, they're giving something with property taxes, but they're not sure what. We did request that we don't have to mail that extra letter out because that costs the state taxpayers one million dollars to mail it and it's telling everybody absolutely nothing.
It's a super low conversation where the, the DOT wants to take over the permitting process for the county roads.
There was alleged legislature that did that one. Yeah, the DOT really doesn't like it, but the state legislature also said that we can petition to keep the roads off. Uh, from issuing, the OT issuing the permits on it.
Yeah.
Which we love.
And um, this all goes into effect July twenty fifth of this year. So all the counties have to use the same software and doing the bridge analysis.
Isn't that super loader, is that super load?
No, it's the BRR.
Okay.
Um. Software.
Yeah.
The Astro BRR is what. And we were already using that software, so one of the advantages they gave us is.
Transfer files.
We can transfer the files to the DOT. But the kind of cost that we're gonna incur from this is just absurd, the preliminary estimates that came, not estimates, a calculation from Dr. Jalan. He has on my concrete pavements, it's gonna cost me five hundred thirty five dollars per mile that the super loads run, now that's. Typically when these guys are moving their rock crushers and their excavators, they're up in that hundred and twenty five thousand pound category, that's how much life it takes out of my pavements. And asphalt roads, it's only like three hundred and fifty dollars per mile, but that's because. But that's because they only have half the life and cost the same initially. And that's in, and that's in their calculations.
Having worked at that office at that best, get bridges instructors, I mean, we had files that have a bridge, we had an individual go up to that bridge of minimum every two years.
State bridge.
Yeah, state bridge, state and federal, so, I mean, having that oversight from somebody who can't typically go to those bridges all the time, but. It, it doesn't make sense to me.
There doesn't, no, and the state doesn't like this either, but the legislature is the one that did that. And so the DOT is kind of at a loss, says we can petition them and they're working on trying to come up with the guidelines. But.
Oh, what, okay, so what's, what's the thought process? From the legislator's standpoint about go, changing that permitting process?
Because the county engineers were not buckling down like they wanted to and just issuing these permits whole, all across the board.
The other side of it.
There's only.
Do we need money for the permits?
Yes, it'll amount, and it's, it's in my budget there too now, it'll amount to like thirty five thousand a year. But it won't begin to touch the damages that are being caused, the twelve percent increase in weights according to the college professors across the board. Is a sixty percent increase in stresses. And so Dr. Jalan's supposed to be working on how much this is actually costing the counties.
And if they follow through with this, it's the cost of the oversight that we lose, it's all the damage that, hey.
We'll still keep the damage.
We all know about this bridge, we don't want you to travel on it.
Yeah, um, if I have, if I start posting my bridges, again, you could go to forty, well, you're supposed to do the analysis and then post it. And I look at the old bridges that I've got east of Brandon, I'm working on that little summary to you on, on bridges. They're both constructed about nineteen fifty eight, or not fifty eight, about fifty three.
Mm-hmm.
So here we got bridges that are past their seventy year life now. That the state dumped on us fifteen years ago, twenty years ago because they couldn't afford them. And then they put the heavier loads, the legislature put the heavier loads on them.
The other, the other aspect that the state is trying to do is each engineer has a license and competency, so some have geotechnical, some have structures. Uh, transportation was kind of the area that I worked at and then, so they don't all have the structural analysis that Brian has. And so that's, that's the difficulty and that's, that's the fix that they're trying to remedy, but it doesn't make sense in our county. So it's, it's a one solution fits all that just doesn't make sense for, I don't know.
Doesn't make sense for any of the counties really, except maybe, maybe a Polk County or something like that, but.
So whoever's driving the spend and maybe just explain it, what is the positive from there and what, what are they seeing that's gonna benefit?
This is centralization of data, sort of.
Well. Well, to save money in their eyes.
Yes, and, and start look who's supporting this legislation and tell some stories too, so they can take their semis. And run ninety two thousand pounds legally and not have to stop and get permits from all the different counties. Now they can't run them on the interstate system because they can't legally run that heavy on the interstate. Right now, they can run heavier on the county roads legally than they can on the interstates.
Ninety two thousand, on a wet day like this, it's just gonna, that gravel's gonna run out and then same thing happens to the pavements, you lose all that support, so. That's, that's where that local control really, really matters.
And so the, the, the next comment you hear is, we'll embargo your roads, now that's the board of supervisors that would embargo the roads. But that is, that's only good for ninety days.
And if I embargo my roads, what am my farmers gonna think about that?
They don't like it, they don't.
Then we won't do it. Because that's our economy.
Don, I, I, you're not hearing any arguments from me because it's unenforceable. And it's.
Yeah, there's no point to it.
Yeah.
And if you do, and if you don't, right?
You're right, yeah, and so it's really, uh, just like the, the loud, the heavier logging trucks a few years ago.
But they're artificially trying to raise our capacity even though we don't have.
I totally understand that, we're not gonna change them. We're not gonna change that, we need to accept it, what they're trying to do with this piece of legislation is take thirty five thousand dollars away from us and say we're gonna do it anyway. That's the bottom line.
Yeah.
We accept it, then we have to increase our budgets and start reconstructing all of our roads, all of them.
And even the, even the rock roads take their beating as you pointed out.
Yeah.
You go out and I, and I end up getting called out to one of these roads because the edges are so steep. Well, the top was about four, almost forty feet wide because when the roads were soft, everything just beat flat. Then the, the dishes get steep from the tops and pushed out.
Well, the other, the other, probably the ultimate or the ulterior and the other argument with that is if they, if they run heavier, then they have to run, make less trips.
That's their purpose, that, that's their, that's.
Then you save on diesel, you save on air pollution, you save on a lot of stuff.
Yep, so, so their answer is it's, it's, we have to do this economic, for economic reasons.
Right.
But that, we're gonna push the cost to, they push the cost down to the roads.
I don't, I don't see them offering any additional funding.
That's the, that's the problem there.
In fact, it looks like they've been taking their lion's share year to year, year over year, they keep taking. More of the, the county funds and diverting it to the DOT, so.
Well, that's all legislative, what, what goes where, and, and there's some of that's coming into, coming up to play again too, and we need to. Stay on top of that too, and that is our time twenty one fine funds. Because once it reached a certain amount, it was supposed to go back to the original formula, which the counties got more.
Mm-hmm.
And that's been happening, but they're trying, there are some efforts to get rid of that time, that half in the time twenty one funding.
So, the fix on this maybe would be for the state to release more funds to the counties to update their roads if they're going to have us run heavier.
Yep, if somehow we've got to get funding into the road system.
We would.
So then we need to petition our, our legislators to give us more funding.
About how long would it take to fortify those roads, to make those strong enough for the ninety two thousand?
Well, it goes back to if you're talking your rock roads, and that's what we've been playing around a little bit with the base stabilizations and even looking at what the roller tells us how strong the roads out there now, trying to identify. Areas, but when you start talking your pavements, the only way you really make them strength, stronger is when you come back into rehab, that's when you're doing that. And those dollar signs, we got a good bid, like there was almost what, a million less than what Alex was expecting on our last project. But it's, but it's still seven hundred thousand a mile.
So we have to repay all of the roads.
Yeah, it'll only take us a little more than a hundred years to get to them all. At the current funding. And I went through the rock numbers because you really noticed it on the rock roads too. And these prices went up eight point four last year and it's six point six this year, or six point two.
So if they installed this, this law in a hundred years, we might be able to catch up with them without law?
But that's enough, installed ten early laws.
Yeah.
And we won't even be hung grave the same way.
Well, and I, I have to clarify that here, we just, like I said, the seven hundred thousand, but I just picked up four hundred thousand in safety funds. And we've got a surface trot, transportation block ran on that at one point nine million, well, that's assuming those. Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, that's assuming those funds go away.
Yeah.
And. I'll tell you what really convinced me I need to put the tight paved shoulders on, was that W fourteen north of, north of Quasquithen. Because they have, we had a lot of heavy semis on that, they're breaking the shoulders off. Well, I either have to go thicker with my pavement or put a tight paved shoulder on, stop that problem.
Yeah, I remember when you paved D twenty two shoulders, that, yeah, let's see exactly why you did that.
It's interesting challenges.
Oh, it is. Yeah, and I made the comment earlier and I don't, do they not care or do they don't?
You don't understand.
Don, you're probably right. And that's where I'm trying to get the studies from Dr. Jalan and such out there.
It's been the last decade or so, the representation of the legislator has gone more urban than rural, we have less rural people that. Are on these roads, live and, and experience those things, and I really believe that the last few years, we've made a lot of decisions urban, you know, for urban issues more than the rural.
Right.
How do you, how do you combat that type of thinking?
Excellent point, it's accurate.
Well, and. Sadly, a lot of the influence is based on most populous counties in Iowa. The stories, the folks, the Lynn.
That's nationwide.
Johnson.
Nationwide.
And we all kind of get left in the dust.
Put a lot back into our communities.
Yeah.
Friends.
But if you, if you don't have that rural background, you don't understand. Ten, twelve years ago, they talked about the urban flight again, was, I mean, that's in Iowa. People, there aren't the jobs in the, in the rural areas, so people are going to the, the, the big eight. Communities and getting jobs and that type of thing, so we lose representation, we lose school population, we lose population in general, those type of things, so. Okay, now the world depressed.
Yeah, well.
Went to the Roy, some people I used to work with, that's where the doctor.
Yeah. What's the answer, just keep after it, keep after it and.
Yeah.
Do the best you can. Yeah, I, I, I almost have my summary on the bridges done, but now Blackhawk County wants a summary on the rail, their bridges too.
Interesting, good for them. Hey, you guys, you folks have saved a lot of, a lot of money with those rural cars, that's awesome.
Yeah, we've got about twelve other research projects that we've done big time and I like to point to the Barski Bridge here, the deck overlay on that. That was part of our research project in nineteen ninety nine, that's the way the state has overlays now. It's, used to be with the typo mix, you had to have the specialized equipment, there were three contractors in state of I O capable doing the deck overlays. But we started putting super plasticizers in the concrete and tape, made that typo instead of a zero to one inch slump, a three or four inch slump.
Yeah.
And then paving it with, with brick, with truss brick, um, just a vibratory truss.
Okay.
And so we started doing that, got involved with the research project, we did Barski Bridge. Out by the fairgrounds and we did the one north of Jessup, or north of Quaskey that we replaced when, when. Got the. Partnered with, grew involved when they donated the materials. And that's the method that the state uses for deck overlays.
Yeah, that makes sense, I didn't think about law, uh, increasing the slum.
Well, the zero to one inch slump won't come out of a ready mixed truck.
No, that would be pretty tight.
But now you get it with the super plasticizers in the three, four inch category and you can work with it.
Sure. Helps get up behind that rebar too.
Mm-hmm. Well, you don't, with a deck overlay, you don't have a lot of rebar exposed, you hope.
We dig the rest in here.
Yep.
Anything else from public comment?
Telling stories on bridges, that doesn't end.
I'll make the motion to uh, uh, close the session, uh, excuse me.
Yeah, we need to close our, uh, regular session and then we need to go into exempt session and call Renee, she sent an email this morning, it'll only take about ten minutes. And if that, and then we need to go into our budget session.
With the exempt section on the uh.
Because it's an exempt session, you do not need to have an agenda for.
Thank you, okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Can you want us to step out of the exempt session?
Yes.
It's an exempt session, yes, please, I need to stop the recording.